Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, October 7, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. The Finance and Law Committee, Mr. LaVell is the Chair, we have new papers. We have Bill Number 751. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Dentons, Cohen, and Grigsby, PC, in an amount not to exceed $7,940.68 for professional legal services in connection with immigration matters. Public Safety Services, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair, we have new papers. We have Bill Number 752. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Homeland Security, to receive a fiscal year 2020 assistance to firefighters grant, COVID-19 supplemental, and further providing for an agreement for the purchase of COVID-related personal protective equipment. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair, we have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 706. Resolution providing for an agreement with KCI Technologies for the design, engineering, and miscellaneous services associated with the 28th Street Bridge Construction Project, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $900,000. Bill Number 710. Resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the 28th Street Bridge Construction Project, and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof, not to exceed $1,220,000, reimbursable at 95%. Bill Number 745. Resolution providing for professional services agreement and/or contract with Rarik Pacific Company for the manufacturing and distribution of recycling containers and provision of containers for the payment thereof, cost not to exceed $1,351. Bill Number 746. Resolution amending Resolution 335 of 2019, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to supplement a professional services agreement with a consultant, Eileen Papale, as a sole source to provide professional support services to the staff of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Kraus is the Chair, we have new papers. We have Bill Number 749. Resolution providing for the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies for job development and employment services necessary to implement the 2020 Neighborhood Employment Program. Bill Number 750. Resolution providing the authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies to provide job development and employment services, wages and fringe benefits for supervisor, staff, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, vocational skills training, and on-the-job training, outreach, recruitment costs, and administrative expenditures necessary to implement the 2020 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair, we have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 198. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, zoning code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, parking, loading, and access in order to eliminate minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings. Bill Number 719. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 863, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, by reducing bridge upgrades by $12,500 and increasing 28th Street Bridge by $250,000 to reflect the local, federal highway administration, and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation shares." Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Ms. Strasburger is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 753. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with CIS, Center for Internet Security, for a one-year term for Albert M.D. monitoring application to predict malicious activity on the city network by monitoring, alerting, and analyzing information gathered by sensors at a one-time cost not to exceed $14,700, with three additional option years of 2021, 2022, and 2023. Bill Number 754. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a multi-year agreement with E+ Technology, Inc. for network monitoring and a security professional services partner aligned with key business goals of reducing risk, improving service efficiency, and minimizing client impact to include better network utilization, monitoring and enhanced security posture throughout the enterprise at a cost not to exceed $484,193. Bill Number 755. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement with the Change in Innovation Agency, LLC, for access to their learning management system and consultative assistance to adapt the City of Pittsburgh Gold Belt Workshop for e-learning for one year, cost not to exceed $18,000. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair, we have new papers. We have Bill Number 747. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Botero Development at 4112 Butler Street. And Bill Number 748. Resolution amending Resolution 342 of 2019, entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Office of the Management and Budget and the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Oxford Development Company to Serve as Property Manager for 412 Boulevard of the Allies to Provide for Additional Funding for Management Fees at an amount not to exceed $430,976.2 and to authorize appropriation of building operations at an amount not to exceed $1,318,644.76." That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, October 7, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or maybe be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Our first speaker is Shamon Poma.
Greetings. Greetings.
Greetings. Your time will begin.
Okay, thank you. Greetings, everyone. What I have to say is in relationship to the URA and the city discussing land in the City of Pittsburgh and who shall have ownership, the Indian problem. Europeans, particularly those who desire the Western frontier, resented, my people, the Aborigines. Even George Washington believed that. The best way to solve this Indian problem was to simply civilize our ancestors, and that suggestion is utter nonsense, for it was our ancestors who helped the pilgrims and peasants of Europe and England survive. Many of our people were forced to convert to Christianity, adopt European-style economic practices, such as individual ownership of land, of which was against our own laws, customs, and traditions. One nation, many people, many people, one nation. Many of our ancestors disagreed, thus the Indian Removal Act of 1830 was created to remove us and to set the stage to steal our land. Andrew Jackson vigorously promoted this new policy. Hundreds of thousands of our people lived in millions of acres of land in Georgia, Tennessee, Alabama, North Carolina, and Florida, land our ancestors have occupied and cultivated since time immemorial. The colonizers working on behalf of European settlers who wanted to grow cotton on our fields, on our land, stealing our livestock, burning and looting our houses and towns, committing mass murders and squatting on our land, state governments joined in this effort to drive our ancestors out of the South. The federal government forced us to leave our homelands and walk hundreds of miles. This was our relative. This took place in the northern states as well, Illinois and Wisconsin, for example. The bloody Black Hawk War in 1832, open to European settlement, millions of acres of our land belonging to our nation, several states passed laws limiting our sovereignty and rights encroaching on our territories. In Worcester, Virginia versus Virginia, 1832, the U.S. Supreme Court objected to these practices and affirmed that our nations were sovereign nations. Many continued to disavow this and continued to steal our land. Southern states were determined to take ownership of Indian lands and would go to great lengths to secure this territory upon securing millions of acres of our land. Thus, Land Grant Colleges Act of 1862, or the Morrill Act of Congress, 1862, that provided grants of land to state to finance the establishment of colleges specializing in agriculture and the mechanic arts, as these Europeans knew nothing of growing food on our land while leaving our ancestors fighting for our land. Thus, finally, the Homestead Act of 1862, where President Abraham Lincoln signed the Homestead Act on May 20 of 1862, giving citizens and future citizens up to 160 acres of Aboriginal land, provided that they live on it and prove it and pay a small registration fee. The government granted more than 270 millions of our land while the law was in effect. Here, Pennsylvania, Pittsburgh, and City Council now have a great opportunity to make right of the depredations done upon our ancestors. Therefore, no conversation of land access shall be made with the utmost faith and consideration being given to the Aboriginal American Indians. Again, I say, no conversations of land access shall be made.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ikuhana Hal Malkina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love, balance, and harmony. My title is Ikuhana Hal Malkina, the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I speak with a voice of conviction. I speak with a voice of urgency. Now is the time for those responsible for keeping their word and their oath to the Aboriginal American people who welcomed all people onto our shores, into our land, under one agreement, is that they keep their promise, to keep their oath, to uphold the Aboriginal American people, to give honor to the American Aboriginal people, to respect the Aboriginal American people, whereas this nation should address the broken treaties and many ill-conceived policies by federal, state, and local municipalities. We are the Aboriginal American people. You have done such atrocities, extermination, termination, the forced removal of our people off of our land, to relocate us, to gentrify us in more current states, off of our land, as if we have no say. Our voices will be heard, and these wrongs shall be righted. The United States has forced our communities off of our land, and we are here to reclaim our land and our culture and our tradition in our homeland. It is of great importance to observe the utmost good faith towards all Aboriginal American people. So as City Council later will discuss justice, be sure to put us on your agenda. We don't understand how you can sleep well at night, not considering the emails and the multiple pleas that we make on this line, and no one has reached back or reached out to us to speak to us. You all have emails, every last one of you City Council members. You also have voicemails. You also have phone calls. Deb Gross, Ricky Burgess, Daniel LaBelle. We employ all of you to do the right thing, to honor and respect Aboriginal American people in our indigenous land.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kotu Kotakibe.
Greetings. This is Kotakibe, the Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy Aboriginal American People. I'd like to greet the City Council members today. And again, I would like to remind the City Council that Aboriginal and Indigenous peoples of the Americas, we are here within the City of Pittsburgh, around the City of Pittsburgh, near the City of Pittsburgh. And this is our ancestral land, as acknowledged and identified through the several treaties. And we have a government-to-government relationship between us and the United States and all their municipalities, to include the City of Pittsburgh and several other municipalities. And it's time that those municipalities honor who we are as a people and start to build, rebuild our relationship, government-to-government relationship with the natural and Aboriginal peoples of this land, so we could foster and bring in a new era of working together to bring an end to a lot of social ills that plague a lot of people in this area and in other areas. So it is highly encouraged for City Council members and ourselves to get together, to sit down, have a conference, have some meetings around the rights of the people, around the duties of City Council, and what they can and cannot do, which to include the police brutality and reforms and things of that nature, to make sure we can all work together to provide a harmonious, a harmonious place for everyone to live. You know, this is our goal. This is our duty. It should be the duty as well of City Council as according to the Home Rule Charter, which all of you are bound by oath of affirmation to support the Constitution for the United States of America, as well as the Constitution of Pittsburgh, so on and so forth. And we're focusing on those two processes. And we would like to start to engage, actively engage with City Council to come up with solutions for a lot of problems that plague a lot of the Aboriginal peoples that have been plaguing our people since the beginning of colonization. We're here to overturn that and to hold City Council members and others accountable, as whether it's the police and things of that nature, accountable to their oath to the Constitution. And that oath should not be taken lightly. And if necessary, we will pull everyone's oath to have these meetings so as to remind everyone of the solemn oath and duty that they took to support the fin, the Constitution for the United States of America and Pittsburgh, and particularly Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution, which guarantees us a government-to-government relationship, and that ensures that our rights will never be trampled by the city, municipality, or anybody else acting in ultra-virus or possibly acting under color of law. These things have to be addressed.
Thank you very much. That exhausts our list of speakers, so we will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Here. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. LaVell, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
I do believe Corey is with us as well. I think he was on mute.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Eight members present.
Thank you. We will now move on to our committees. First committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 777.
Bill 777, ordinance, amended ordinance 22 of 2020, entitled, "Directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to Place Before the Qualified Voters of the City at the 2020 November General Election, a referendum question to the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article II, Executive, be amended and supplemented by amending and adding new language to Section 229 and 230, and adding a new Section 231, expanding the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to require police officers to participate in investigations, conducting, performing audits of the police bureau, and preventing the removal of a Board member's except for just cause and with City Council's approval to remove the requirement to mail to every registered elector in the city."
Motion to approve a brief discussion.
Second.
Chair.
Councilman Burgess.
Basically, in consultation with our clerk, to do a mailing at this time would be upwards of $30,000 to $40,000, and that, given the pandemic and our fragile financial state as a city, we just think it is a unnecessary expense at this time. This was not done, this was a provision we put in, really not thinking that the pandemic would be this exhaustive. It's also not something we normally do. So when we do these, we've done these before. When we've done these changing of the amendment, it is not essential or necessary. It was something that we thought would be beneficial, but given the pandemic and just given the financial, the financial expense, I talked to the clerk. The clerk has recommended that I, that we not do this. And so this sort of, this cleans up the legislation, so we are not forced to spend the money. Did that say it right, clerk?
Yes, it's going to cost us about $66,000.
I'm sorry, $66,000. And so we just thought that there are other more pressing ways to spend that money than the mailing.
And we will make it available on the city's website. The bottom part of that that says that we make it available on the city's website and whoever requests it, we will forward that language to them if it's requested. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of speakers. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. That was my first question. So thank you, Madam Clerk. What would the exact expense be, which is okay, you said $66,000? And that was for, like, you know, most of us have experienced with direct mail, having been elected. So those were for, you know, postcards for the cheapest type of mail, is that bulk rate, postcards, et cetera?
It's bulk mail, but it's to, we would have to send it to at least 137,000 residents.
Dwellings, yeah, residents.
It would, it would not be a postcard, because we would have to put the, you know, that text language. So it would be difficult to put all of the language on a postcard. So it would have to be a letter, which would include grams of paper, envelopes, and the postage.
So I get that the amendment, the original language of the legislation says full draft. I guess I'm just looking to see if, like, you know, how robust of an outreach we could do. And we don't need to go into all the detail today, but if there was just even, does postcard cut it in half? Possibly, if you're talking about the grams of weight and like having, you know, envelope and insert, maybe even cut it down by a quarter, down to, let's say, $45,000 or something like that. Would it, you know, at least be able to direct, alert people that there is a ballot question and the full text is available, like, you know, like this phone number or at this website or, you know, if you email at this address? Because I just kind of feel like posting it on our own media is not good enough. And I don't know how other members feel. There's also, again, we all of us have done direct voter outreach, because we've all been elected, right? You know, things like robocalls are super cheap. Again, just to get the notification out there, because I will say, even though we just went through a ballot initiative last year that wasn't City Council-directed, it was petition-directed. I still had a conversation this week with another elected official residing in Allegheny County who didn't really think about the fact that the, that, who thought that the language on the ballot was the same language as the full amendment. And so as we saw last year and as we know this year, there is a lengthy, the Home Rule Amendment is very lengthy relatively to what you'll see on the screen of your ballot. And so then we talked through it and went kind of like line by line and point by point. And it, you know, it was a lot more understandable to the person I was talking to, to read the whole text. So I just, I still feel like there's a lack of awareness of that there is both a ballot text and a full text, and what the meaning of it is. And I just, I think that just, we're learning these days that when you put something on your own Facebook and/or Twitter, not that many people see it because of the algorithms and because of the narrow-bandedness now that, you know, when you pick up your own phone and look at social media, you're only seeing a small fraction. So I just feel like that's not a robust enough outreach. So I would like to have a little more thought into that. But I do understand better the nature of the amendment today. I did, I myself didn't understand that it was only something that you, that Councilwoman Burgess had put in his legislation. I thought it was something that we were usually required to do. So thank you for that qualification, but I would like us to put some energy into doing better outreach. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. I don't have too much more to add. I would agree with what Councilwoman Gross said. And I generally don't feel comfortable taking away a method of educating voters and the public without having a plan of action in its place. So that's what I would like to see as well. What is, I think that posting on the website is a good start, but what will replace the active voter education on this? Is it, and what are the options? What are all the options at various cost price points? Is it robocalls? Is it sample social media? Is it informational sessions, webinars? Is it flyers? Like, what can replace it? Is it some or all of the above? That's what I would like, that would make me feel more comfortable with taking this option away. I fully understand our budget constraints. I just want to see something else replace it.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Seeing none. Seeing none, um. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The bill is recommended.
I'll abstain until Tuesday.
One abstention. Thank you.
Actually, Mr. Chair, may I change my vote as well to an abstention? I agree with Councilwoman Strasburger. That's a better idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two abstentions, the bill is still recommended. Uh that takes us to our new paper, Bill seven fifty-one.
Bill seven fifty-one, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Dentons, Cohen and Grisby. In an amount not to exceed seven thousand nine hundred forty dollars and sixty-eight cents. For professional legal services in connection with immigration matters.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It was recommended. That takes us to our invoices. We do have invoices for approval. Need a motion?
A motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we received a notification of a need to waive the rules on council for one of the expenditures. Is that still?
That's under the P cards, I believe.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That will take us to our interdepartmental transfers. Um we actually have those today. Um new motion for interdepartment transfers.
So. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The transfers are approved. That takes us to our P cards for approval. Need a motion?
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
We need a motion to waive the rules so that we can approve a public safety bill under the P cards.
Uh motion to waive the rules.
Need a second.
Second.
Good. Uh brief discussion.
Yes.
Uh thanks, Mr. Chair. So it is item number thirty-one. And it is an expenditure of twenty-five thousand six hundred nineteen dollars for controlled materials. Uh for uh uh public safety services during um uh protest. Um yes, uh but now Councilwoman Strasburger sent an email out asking if we could have a a clear delineation of what those expenditures were. Do we have that? I'm just curious.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do? I'm sorry, it did it come by? Email?
Let me see if I can open it. Yeah.
Okay, I'll 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 delay my comments for now and I'll check the email to read it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilwoman Gross.
Sure, I'm trying to get mine open. It appeared to be for tear gas. Like seven thousand rubber bullets that were all looked like they were ordered on June second. Maybe May thirty-first, kind of right at the really the outset of the protest. And I just need to. Say that, you know, on June first, on Center Avenue especially. Um we have an active OMI investigation and CPRB investigation into the use especially of those weapons against. Uh peaceful protesters um who were just there. Um and uh were shot at close range by these projectiles that are not really supposed to be shot at people. Um people hit directly with tear gas canister canisters. Um and as we've heard in many public comments, just to remind council that our. That a chemical weapon banned um in warfare, but we're using against our own civilians. And um and here we see the price uh and the dollar cost, let alone the human cost and and. We've discussed whether we should be banning. These um these. I don't know what to call them, right? Um these chemical weapons and these kind of projectiles. And um. And and also I think the larger public discussion is about how we approach. Um this kind of public um. Use of space um and who we use it against and for what reasons, right? That people are in the streets. Um demonstrating means that they are, you know, eager to be heard, not eager to be shot. Um so uh I just, I really not sure I can sup, I mean, this is, I just want the public to understand that this has already been paid for. Right? So these items have been were purchased. The other issue is like they're ordered in May, May thirty-first or the order date on the invoice that I actually don't have in front of me. Is um but I looked at last night is June second. So it's like July, August, September, October, and we're just seeing this on our council agenda now. And I I wonder about that. Um maybe, I don't know if uh Chair Finance, Mr. LaVell, if you have any. Or Madam Clerk, do you know, like, do we usually see a four-month delay in a P card? Which is just a department using a debit card. So I want to say that it's different than an invoice. Um there's no vendor waiting to be paid. It was paid instantly, just like if you'd used your debit card in in in, you know. And ordered all these items on Amazon uh four months ago.
Bill, Bill, Bill Abanik is on, so.
Okay, let's let's ask uh our uh finance director. Um Bill, could you identify yourself, please, and see if you have any answers to my questions?
Yeah, Bill Abanik, uh City Council Budget Director. Uh could you be specific which one you have answered first?
Sure, um let's say all the other P cards on today's agenda. Um were any of the other ones purchased four months ago?
No, sometimes there are delays. Apparently uh in the uh email that I had sent and the clerk had also sent out yesterday, I sent one this morning. The explanation from the staff was that due to clerical error, the invoice was uh delayed and the payment was not made. Uh until the twenty-eighth of September. And uh caught this right away, not questioning what materials were purchased, but more that process. Uh so when we saw this, we had no explanation when it had first come off. Uh and typically these uh, you know, the the payments are made, they're uh done and put in by uh. Uh the prior Wednesday and then appear on the agenda next. Sometimes there'll be a week or or maybe two weeks delay, but rarely this uh. Uh this length of time. Uh it may be because these things were initially purchased through state contract possibly. I don't have a clarification of that. But uh that would make some uh some sense. But uh for some reason, uh the pain was delayed. I will be glad to get a further explanation. Uh from the the folks to see exactly where things broke down. Uh because these things, these should come up right away. So in the event there is something we can do about it, uh it's not past that ninety-day period.
When you say payment was delayed. Do you mean the vendor didn't get paid until September twenty-eighth?
That's correct. That's what I, my understanding from the email sent by the uh public safety staff. Uh was they didn't uh receive the payment until the twenty-eighth.
How does that happen if they used a P card back in May?
I don't know as if they did use a P card back in May. I'm not sure what that process was, and that's.
But then why I said, yeah, how is it on our P card? It was a P card purchase.
They utilized the P card to make the final payment or make a payment to them.
Twenty-five thousand dollars is what's on our agenda, twenty-five thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars?
That's correct.
Well, that's the whole amount of the invoice that I'm looking at.
Yes.
So it wasn't a partial payment.
Yes, apparently not.
So. Maybe they ordered it on May thirtieth?
And it was, they were, the items were received in June.
Received in June. They actually picked them up. It wasn't shipped. Um wherever that is, it's just on Brighton Road.
Yeah, typically, typically, if we were purchasing through a different method, like if it was on a contract or something. Those payment, the payment would have went out after the receipt of the uh material. So uh what they said is there was a clerical error. Uh the vendor's invoice was delayed and payment was not made. So I I'm not sure. Uh whether it got hung up in the controller's office. Uh it's too soon for me to have gotten an explanation uh on that. I I will talk to both uh. Mr. Schmidt in uh public safety and I'll talk to the controller's office as well, too, to get a further explanation and share that with council.
Um Madam Clerk is starting to tell me there's an email from public safety that I don't see. I don't know if she has information that she's saying an email that I can't I can't see on my screen.
I just forwarded you the email from um. Public safety, just it should be your very top email. I just sent it to you.
Okay, I see. So it's email from you. Okay.
From me.
Yeah.
Sharing the information with you.
So the items were purchased on, were requested on May thirty-first, purchased on June first. Um and so there was uh, as they say, increased civil disturbances. And um just they said they just didn't get around to it. Basically, they were very busy, so that was a clerical error. Um so it seems like the invoice was just sitting here and then the P card. Payment transit, the P card transaction, like they didn't actually use their debit card to pay for it until you're saying late September. Um Mr. Abanik, so um I just wanted to not let that go. Um unspoken that this is kind of what we're looking at here, and it's really a question about whether we should be purchasing these things, honestly. And using them on our civilian. So I'll let other members try them in if 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 they wish, and I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a process question because I'm not sure that I've ever explored this. If we fail to vote in favor of a per- a particular P card purchase. What then happens if they've already, if it's essentially a debit card purchase? Do they have to make a transfer from within the department to cover those costs? What what is the actual impact of that?
Uh there's a committee that's convened to dispute the charges. Uh in this case, it would be very difficult because as I I mentioned, the uh it it's been over ninety days and the items received. I imagine, and we've never gone through it, but I I imagine that we could request that the uh items are returned. Um or that the uh a- as you mentioned, they pay for it through another uh process within their department.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. I'll I'll basically just um give a second to what Councilwoman Gross said and. My concern over uh the need for such um both the types of the munitions and the quantity. It seemed as if they were preparing for many, many more confrontations with protesters in the crowd. Most of which did not bear out, so um. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So we're still. Se- uh, I see your hand, Councilwoman Gross. Okay, uh so second round, and we're still on the actual motion to amend, but Councilwoman Gross.
Apologize for receiving my phone there. I had a a question from media about the invoice. Um so I'm going to say it out loud, because I had a couple, we didn't actually say. Um except for what before I was looking at the invoice, I kind of vaguely said it what it was, but so I'm looking at the invoice. Um and it says something like forty-eight uh G R N D smoke C S printed. I don't really understand that. Um one hundred and forty-four G R N D T P smoke C S. One hundred and forty grenade C S vapor ninety-six C T G C S multi. And then twelve hundred C T G beanbag kevlar. So, you know, vaguely I understand that we fired these kind of smoke bombs at people um. Grenade vapor sounds like tear gas to me um and beanbag. Um are the ones that we've talked about um in the media, that public safety has reported in the media several times that are. Um projectiles that they shoot at people that are the less lethal. Rounds. Um so, okay, I just, I had a question from the public, so I thought I would list those. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So with that, we need a motion. We, so we need to actually vote on the motion, motion to waive the rules. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Sorry, now is on mute.
We do a roll.
Roll call vote.
Or Madam Clerk.
Yes. Reverend Burgess.
But I I guess, can I, I don't, I know we're in voting. I have a question, though, that I can't vote without an answer to a question. If if I can have further discussion, I do have a question. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm so I'm trying to follow the conversation. Mr. Abanik.
Yes, sir.
What happens if we vote no or hold it?
The purchase has already been waived. You would be holding for a further explanation at this point. Uh we could convene our committee uh for disputes and further discuss this. Uh but payment has been made. What we would be asking for is either a refund. Um or for a change of venue of where the monies come from, but the purchase has been made. The items have been received. It's going to be very difficult to uh. Uh to not do uh not allow this purchase to have gone through at this point.
Okay, I was just checking. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah. I had a question. So these purchases were made prior to our demobilization bill. And I didn't know if anyone could speak to whether or not these. These purses now. You know, that we've passed that bill, are they outside of that? You know, or any items outside of that? Um that piece of legislation.
I do not believe so.
I don't think so either. I don't think this is. Uh the demobilization has something to do with the type of weapons. It's two categories. It's the type of weapons. And where the, and where the, in the vendor. In this case, I don't think either one of them are prohibited. I don't think. But I'll I'll check.
Yeah, because I know there is a a type of, yeah, I'm just curious if there was a purchase that was made that now we're, or, you know.
I'll find out.
Alright.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Coghill.
Yes, um just a couple of things I wanted to say. Uh. First of all, I. In that event out in East Liberty, I don't believe they were using war-grade gas or chemicals. Um that was said, I think Councilwoman Gross said that. And also, when you say, you know, they're firing at innocent protesters, you know, innocent protesters did get hit. But I don't believe our police force was firing at them. And going forward, you know, as Councilwoman uh Strasburger and Gross had said, you know, we have to have those conversations whether we should even be purchasing. These types of materials and perhaps policing in the future. Uh will be different and we won't be purchasing these materials, but as it is now. We did purchase them. They thought they were doing the right thing. Um we have a bill to pay, I guess, is what I'm saying, and I think it would be irresponsible for us to not pay our bills, but um. But certainly the conversation in the future, I look forward to having with all colleagues as to, you know, what policing looks like in the future. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, uh roll call vote on the motion to waive the rules.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
No.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
No.
Mr. Wilson. For the Bell Chair.
Aye.
Eyes five, nose three.
So we have waived the rules. Now we're on the P cards in their entirety. Any discussion on P cards in their entirety? Seeing none, all those in favor, um say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed, P cards are approved. Thank you very much. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. We have one new paper, Bill seven fifty-two. You're on mute, Madam Clerk.
Bill seven fifty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Department of Homeland Security to receive a F Y twenty twenty assistance to firefighters grant COVID-nineteen supplement. And further providing for an agreement for the purchase of COVID-related personal protective equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill was recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Uh, we have two deferred papers, Bill seven oh six.
Bill seven oh six, resolution providing for an agreement with K C I Technologies. For design, engineering, and miscellaneous services associated with the Twenty Eighth Street Bridge Construction Project. And providing for the payment of the cost not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars.
A motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
I don't have anything, but I think this is uh. I'm not quite sure whose district this is in. I just wanted to make sure. Councilwoman Gross?
You're on mute, Councilwoman.
Can you help me on which number you're on? I've like lost track of my windows, but closing the other attachments. I lost my agenda.
Seven oh six is the first bill under Public Works.
So this is the railroad issues. There are three bills on today's agenda that we held. Um and I've been going back and forth with um the stakeholders from Polish Hill especially. So again, as a reminder, this is the bridge where if you're on Liberty Avenue in the strip district and you want it, you take a right on Twenty Eighth to go to Polish Hill. It's a railroad bridge over the, you know, over the railroad and the busway. With the car bridge over the railroad in a busway. And it raises all of the same issues as the bridge that we went through last year in the north side. Um, in that if we. Let me put it first in the in the way the neighborhood is is promoting. If we repair the bridge, we can just repair the bridge. If we demolish the bridge and replace the bridge, which is more expensive. Then we use Penn dot funds, but as you can see, where there's a great deal of local expenditure as well. Um, and then we have to adhere to the Penn dot standards, which is to raise the height of that bridge. Which will uh be in Penn dot does that because they want to allow the double decker trains. So it raises all kinds of multi-level concern among our population. Uh, right now, uh, we already have volatile compounds going very, very flammable, very explosive compounds. Going through the heart of the city, including on these rails specifically. Um, that are unprocessed um oil fracking fluids, from what I understand, from the central part of the United States. Going to be processed. Um, but they are not yet processed, and they're going to be processed on the east coast, maybe in the Philadelphia area. Um, they're not routing around the city as they might do away from population centers. Um, they're going right through Polish Hill, right through Bloomfield, right through the north side. And that is deeply concerning and has been for many years now. We know that last year, a double-decker train, fortunately for all of us, full of toilet paper and mouthwash and. You know, non-volatile, um, non-explosive items fell off its rails. And on to down a bluff um onto Station Square last year. Um. And so that while it's been difficult, I I had wanted to to work with the neighborhood and other concerned citizens to have a community meeting. Things are difficult to coordinate these days, right? And so we we haven't been able to do that. Um, so the last email I have is like, yes, there's still opposition. Yes, we would prefer the bridge to be repaired and not replaced. Um, and I just I have to implore to to beg for more time um from council today because we just have not had. Uh, time to really hear from the concerned citizens and then and especially Polish Hill, most impacted. Neighborhood for this bridge, but really this issue impacts all of us. I think the very next bridge is at Negley. Um, just outside of my council boundary and and Councilman Strasburgers. Um, and so, you know, you can see how the train's going to hit these in sequence. And I think after we rate, if we raise these two, then there's no more bridges that would be in the way, is my understanding. So um, yeah, I I mean, I I would I welcome further discussion and concerned about this issue. Um, there's certainly the um, I think the the group that we heard from last year on the north side issue was the. Rail Pollution Protection or something like that, R P three. Um, and um, I've, you know, they're aware of the legislation, but again, it's just people's lives are a bit in disarray now. It's it's difficult to have a a conversation um to really hear concerns directly. So I'll stop with that right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Councilman O'Connor?
Sorry, there's something. My phone keep shortening. I'm only getting half of this. Um, so I was just going to support the hold if we can, but I I have to get I have to host the post agenda later, so I'm going to go to try to fix this. Um, I don't know if anybody can even hear me, hopefully, but I'll just register an I vote on all. On all bills um on the four one two building.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know. I I thanks. I, yeah, I can't hear much, so.
We actually registered the I vote on our remaining bills, and he's an I on a hold if we hold. Um, any further discussion? Councilwoman Strasburger?
I think Councilwoman Wilson was first.
Oh, so Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I I wanted to ask um the Director Ricks um to the table. Hi, Director. Good morning. Um, so the double stack trains that you're mentioning, uh, Councilwoman Gross, that's um. That's a a very uh hot topic on on the north side right now. And so I I was just looking at the map, so this is the same uh line that. Uh, I guess it crosses over by the by the um the convention center and then continues on through this bridge. Director, could you uh give a explanation as to, you know, what these bills do? And and, you know, if this bridge would be raised as well to accommodate it, or does it already accommodate double stack trains?
Yes, the Twenty Eighth Street Bridge, the current height clearance over the tracks of Twenty Eighth Street is twenty-two feet, ten inches. Um. The P U C required height for um new bridges and bridge reconstruction is twenty-two feet. So um this bridge is already permitting that clearance um of the double stacked trains. This bridge um is in a significantly deteriorated condition. Um, it's critically critically important for um mobility and for transit um in this area. It is a historic asset. Um, although many people may have different opinions about the beauty of that bridge. It is designated as a historic asset. Um, and so the probability. Um, it will need to go through all the federal reviews. Um, in any event, the probability um that that bridge will uh be deemed. Uh, necessary for rehabilitation uh versus um replacement is is quite high. So we just got this determination back for the South Negley Bridge, um the South Negley. Um, also a historic bridge along the same historic rail line. Is uh due for rehabilitation, not replacement. Um, so that that's a condition there as well. Um, these bills are for the design phase of the project. Um, bridge design does take um through all of the historic reviews and everything else that we need to do. Bridge design um generally takes um about two years um to complete. It can take significantly longer. Um, we do not want to see this bridge weight restricted. That would have a a very detrimental effect on transit services to Polish Hill. Um, and other communities there. Um, as you know very well, in in District One. Um, West Ohio Street was a similarly positioned bridge that um deteriorated to a point where it was. Um, initially weight limited, and then ultimately we needed to close it because the weight bearing. Um, uh, had been deteriorated to a point that we could not support live loads of even the smallest vehicles. So again, um, this would be to do the design. The bridge clearance is already there for the double stacking. Um, this is an asset preservation exercise for us.
Okay, um, now we uh you and I just attended a meeting last night over over a bridge uh or another, you know, the Merchant Street Bridge. And uh, would this go through the same process uh that that is going through since there is not a height adjustment? But just the historical um requirements from the state?
It will need to go through the one oh six process. It will need to go through the historic review um process. What we um, what we went through um last night was because the Merchant Street Bridge was deemed uh not possible to rehabilitate. The conditions of that bridge required a replacement of that bridge. The first um and sort of, you know, preferred route in historic preservation is. Rehabilitation um uh of those historic assets. Um, so when if the bridge were determined to um not be able to be rehabilitated. Um, if replacement was necessary, then we would need to go through a mitigation uh set of meetings as we did. Um, yesterday for the Merchant Street Bridge because that bridge, the the historic asset will be demolished. Um, and a similarly um. Designed uh asset will be put in its place. But it's not the same in there for mitigation as necessary.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else for first round? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. I I too am very concerned. I've spoke spoken about this in the past, but I'm very concerned about um. Raising bridges than allowing um rail rail lines to double stack and. Um, is particularly interested in or concerned about the issue of double stack trains with volatile chemicals in them. I wish the state could restrict, put a restriction on 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 transfer of volatile chemicals through the state like other states I believe Texas has done. Which would remove some of my concern, not all of my concern with double stack trains. But absent that, I do think we need to stay vigilant with every single bridge. And um, you know, if it's ray, if it's reconstructed and and then therefore we have to, we even if we fight it, we have to raise it. That's a concern, but I did want to. I did want to correct something, and I don't know the exact number, but Councilwoman Gross, I think you said that these two bridges are the only two things standing in the way of that. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, there's something like nine, eight, nine or ten others. So there are many, many more that they would have to raise for the whole transit, for the whole. Line through the city to be able to be double stacked. Um, I don't know the exact number, but it was my impression that these weren't the only two standing in the way. So I don't think there's any reason not to continue to be vigilant, but I just wanted to um to say that. Director Ricks, do you happen to know offhand, not to put you on the spot, what that number is?
Um, there are. I don't know what that number is offhand, and um, this is not one of the bridges. I want to iterate that again. The Twenty Eighth Street Bridge is not one of the bridges. That is a constraining factor in the double stacking right now. It the the clearance is already adequate, so if we do nothing, um, they. You know, at least as far as this bridge is concerned, they have the the clearance to do it. Um, the other bridges will um, it's a that they are proposed um actions are a combination of either. Uh, raising the bridges or lowering the tracks. Um, but there are about nine um locations uh for the public, but I was just trying to quickly Google so that I could pull it up here is. Nor. Or for Southern Vertical Pittsburgh Vertical Clearance Project, um, and that has the full plan.
Thank you.
Online that identifies all of those locations.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. That's helpful. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion first round? If not, uh, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, um, so I'm not one to hold things uh necessarily. I I feel like a lot of times when we hold things, we come back to them and nobody really quite thought about them. But I do hear the concerns that Councilwoman Strasburger and Gross have in this and a director without it implicating the process so much. Um, would all members and particularly uh Gross and Strasburger be comfortable if we held for one more week?
It's um, I I while we're hearing these um, this new, some new information, some old information, some some um complimentary information. Um, it it's it's going to be difficult to relay that to the community members. Again, we're kind of they they had a community. Meeting that would have been an opportunity last night, but they had to cancel their monthly meeting. They have another monthly meeting in a month. Um, we could have a special meeting, but we need to set that up. Domy's been having lots of public meetings. I do want to acknowledge. That they are not slackers when it comes to public meetings. You know, basically, if anyone requests a public meeting, Domy is standing ready to do them, and I really appreciate that. But just getting all ends coordinated, um, I'm I'm really don't, you know, I've been trying now for two weeks. And um, I think if we, you know, just to kind of get everybody focused on it. But if we if we don't, as we know, do that communication, then um people are very anxious about these projects. And we've seen that happen as well. So I think a little bit of communication on the front end here. And it seems to me that since this is a two-year project, we're not facing any crisis deadlines or anything like that. Um, Council, you know, the Director X, please let me know if there's some crisis. Um. Bureaucratically, but I don't believe there is one. No. Are you all there or frozen?
Um, yeah, I mean, I I think we can wait a a couple of weeks. Obviously, um, as I as I mentioned before, these are. Are um, they are bureaucratic processes, and they take us a very long time um to get through the preliminary engineering, the final engineering, and then finally get. To the point of where we can rehabilitate um a bridge again. Um, you know, the the risk that we run, I don't think two weeks is 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 going to take us there. Um, but obviously, uh, we we don't want to get ourselves in a position where. Um, we would need to close something like the Twenty Three Bridge. That won't happen for for several years, but as we know, it took us twenty-two years to. Um, get to reconstruct the the West Ohio Street Bridge. So that's the one concern is to just keep the process going.
Um, I also, uh, while I still have the floor, Director, I want to be sure that you, do I have the floor? Or did I just put it on someone else's time? I think I just brought it in on Councilman Coghill's time.
Councilman Coghill has the floor.
Sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, uh, if that works for you, Councilwoman Gross, I I'll make a motion to hold for two weeks.
I still have discussion.
Okay. So continuing on, um, so technically, we're still on first round. Uh, Councilman Coghill, are you done?
I'm done.
Second round, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Trying to stay in order today. Um. The website that you referred us to, Director Ricks, Norfolk Southern Vertical Clearance Project.
Yeah, what's Norfolk Southern Pittsburgh Vertical Clearance Project?
Um, so. It, yeah, so this is the railroad's goal. Okay, so just no one be confused. It's not just happening by accident, right? Norfolk Southern had owns this track, and it is their goal. Um, Councilwoman Strasburger was asking about the number of bridges. Um, so I'm looking at a map, and I think there's a difference between what's in city city boundary, what's not in city boundary. So um, I only see on this map um with these little white boxes that point at places. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six total, but it looks like one of them is definitely not in the city. And um, or if it is, it is really on the eastern boundary. It might be right on the border there. Um, it kind of down by the Mon. Because the track kind of comes down the Ohio, like upriver on the Ohio, crosses over the Fort Wayne Bridge. Which is one of the convention center, and it takes a really hard left-hand ninety-degree turn there at the convention center, at the Greyhound station, the Amtrak station. Goes alongside Liberty Avenue and under the Twenty Eighth Street Bridge. Um, and I don't see another one. Until it gets way out to one one called Washington Avenue, which looks to me to be out. I don't I don't know what municipality. I can't really zoom in here. It's like a. A PDF. I don't, I don't know what municipality. I can't really zoom in here. It's like a PDF. And so Director, so North Avenue is the one that is already in progress. Pennsylvania Avenue is before it, if you're coming west to east. And Columbus Avenue is before, but other than that, it looks like another one is north of Neville Island. So, or Down River on the Ohio is the first one. So I'm not sure if that's in the city boundary. So it does look like there's just especially one handful in the city boundary. There certainly does. I don't see more than six.
Councilwoman, if I could, if I could add to that, the, the three that are not shown, so the, those that are shown on this map are those projects that Norfolk Southern is responsible for addressing. So those are, those are the Norfolk Southern projects that they will take on for that clearance.
Can we clarify some language here? That they, what, who's, who gave them the responsibility?
Those are projects that they have, they have proposed to pet that they will do. Sorry. So those are, that is what is in their budgetary program to, to do.
So they're willing to pay for these, but not all of them. But it is, it is Norfolk, it's, there's no one else on the planet but Norfolk Southern that wants these clearances. Or do I have that wrong?
What I was going to add was that the, there are three other bridges that, that present constraints, which I think is what you're trying to get at here. The three other bridges, in addition to these six points in the city that, that introduced the constraint to double stacking are the Ridge Avenue Bridge, which has been demolished and removed. So that was one that, that posed a clearance issue.
Who demolished it?
But we did because it was no longer safe and it presented a hazard to, we, it was a liability to the city and we were ordered to remove it.
By whom?
So we can't have, by the PUC, we can't have our, we can't have bridges that were responsible for dropping material and, and being a dangerous condition to those that have the right to travel below. West Ohio Street, which is underway right now, and the South Nedley Bridge.
I'm taking notes. I, I feel like this, every time we have one of these discussions, I get a little bit more of the story. So apologize for, for, and I don't need to take any more council time, but you can see why I think we need a kind of lengthy meeting out not at the council table. For everybody to get the same information, for all of us to be able to ask questions and get more information. If you'd like us to continue the conversation at the council table, you know, maybe we have a post agenda on, just on this topic where we can have other stakeholders and members of the impacted neighborhoods at one time, or again, a dummy public meeting where it can be more interactive on Zoom. Cause you guys have got that down pat now. We're here kind of in webinar format, vetting questions from the community. I think this is, is there, is this, you know, am I, am I negligent? Is this kind of written as a narrative someplace that I haven't read? These, these kind of pieces of the answers that you're giving me today? Cause I don't feel like I've been briefed on this as well as, as I'm getting right now.
Yes, there's a full report that was done a few years ago as part of the state rail plan.
So it's on a state website someplace?
It's on the Penn-Net website. Yes.
Okay. So I will, I will stop talking today. I thank you to the councilman for indulging me with the hold. I'll try to communicate the urgency to the political community, especially in some other stakeholders that we, you know, get their questions answered in some format, whether that's, we need to do it in writing. If we can fit in a meeting, I appreciate your willingness to, to do so. All right. That's all I have today. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill?
I meet you in the middle, Councilwoman Gross, and we motion to hold for three weeks.
Second. Appreciate it.
Okay. Motion to hold three weeks.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It will be held three weeks. That takes us to Bill 710.
Bill 710 Resolution Providing for Indemnity Reinvestment Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the 28th Street Bridge Construction Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $1,220,000, reimbursable at 95% and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500.
Motion to hold three weeks?
Yeah. Right. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of three-week hold, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held three weeks. That takes us to our new paper, Bill 745.
Bill 745 Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Reed Great Pacific Company for the manufacturing and distribution of recycling containers and provision of containers for the payment at a cost not to exceed $1,351,000.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the, the purchase. So this is, if, I don't know if anyone is on the line that can speak to this, but I just want to ask about the size of the containers that are being purchased. Cause I continually get a request for people that live in townhomes for have thinner, thinner recycling bins so that they can move it through their house easier when they don't have access on, on either side of their, their, their property.
Hi, this is Marcel Newman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, the sizes are 32 gallon blue bins with lids. And if there are special needs, there's a form online that we can help distribute and work with the resident.
Oh, great. I will, I will, I will reach out then and get that form. So there isn't, there is an option to, to distribute the thinner ones that I'm referencing.
That's right.
All right, great. Good to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 746.
Bill 746 Resolution Amending Resolution 335 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to supplement a professional services agreement with a consultant, Eileen Papali, as a sole source to provide professional support services to staff of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at a new cost not to exceed $21,000, an increase of $6,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill was recommended. That takes us to Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. New paper, Bill 749.
Bill 749 Resolution Providing for the Authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies for job development and employment services necessary to implement the 2020 Neighborhood Employment Program and providing the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the 2020 Neighborhood Employment Program for a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Yes, I just want to ask the, about the program. Is there someone on the line that could answer a couple of questions?
Good morning, Council. This is Janet Manuel. I am the Director of Human Resources and Civil Service for the city. I also have online with me Deidra Cochrane, who is the Senior Manager of Human Resources, who oversees the Pittsburgh Partnership. And so both she and I, if that is okay with Councilman Kraus, both she and I will be able to respond to Councilman Wilson's respective question.
Yeah, please do, Director. Thank you.
Thank you. So there are a total of soon to be six neighborhood employment centers. And so the purpose of these neighborhood employment centers is that they are located throughout the city of Pittsburgh in various neighborhoods. I believe there is one in each respective district for each council member with the latest that will be opening up soon for Madam President Kel Smith. And so the concept of the neighborhood employment centers is the opportunity to provide the respective community members and constituents, the opportunity to receive information that will help them gain, gain full employment within the city, but also have access to various resources that will benefit them as some may need assistance in job search. Some may need assistance in how to create a resume, interview preparation, et cetera. This is also a location site that is utilized as a resource for our summer months of the Learn and Earn Program as well, where information is made available for the neighborhood constituents and consumers to receive information on how they can actually get involved and be a participant in the Summer Learn and Earn Program. We also utilize the Neighborhood Employment Centers as a resource where we have our typing preparation exams that will help individuals who are seeking employment for the, with the city of Pittsburgh, that they can do sample typing tests, et cetera. So with that information, Councilman Wilson, I will pause. I believe Deidra Cochrane, you are on the line.
Yes, I'm here, Director.
If you could continue to add more information to help Councilman Wilson.
Okay. And it's nice that we do have the Neighborhood Employment Centers in different neighborhoods. Because as you know, sometimes people are more comfortable in their own neighborhoods. And sometimes like they, they don't want to cross bridges or they don't want to go to different areas. So we offer that service in the neighborhoods so people can job search and do workshops or whatever they may need. They can do that as close to their home as possible.
All right, great. Yeah, I, I've been looking into this in the past couple of days and I appreciate that briefing. And I was, you know, the, the place that we have it, it's actually right on the line, but it's actually in a, of my district, but it's in a great spot. And, you know, there, there's really a, you know, a need there. There's a food pantry below where this, this location is. There is a, people that are experiencing homelessness that have the ability to get stay in this, in this, in this facility as well. And I know they, so now this is a, a program. How, how, how long has this program been going on? And could you speak to like the effectiveness of it? Like, do we have numbers on like how many people are, are able to get employment through access to technology and someone on location for, you know, some guidance and training?
Um, I can speak to that, Director, if that's okay.
Yes.
Um, are we, each neighborhood employment center provides us with a monthly report. I don't have those reports with me right now, but I'd be more than happy to share those with you. We, they do report to us how many people come in the door, how many employers have they worked with? And they track that information and they do submit that to us. So I can submit that to you if you would be interested in it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just interested. And I think it's a, a great opportunity. You know, once again, we have a great location for, for the North Side. It's the North Side Common Ministries.
Oh, yes, yes.
And we're, we're trying to highlight that right now, especially since people are looking for employment. So thank you for all this information.
Oh, you're welcome. And I, I'm not sure how long it's been in existence. I know it's been here since before I started working here in 2002, but I, I believe it was around 1998.
I guess I do have one more question. So we're doing, we're doing equipment and then we're also doing, doing money for, I guess, the, the individuals that are there to, to help and assist on the, on the equipment. What type of equipment upgrades are we getting? Just new computers and printers?
When you say the, the, the staff, that's actually like our city staff who work on the program. So that's, can that pays for part of our salaries. And the equipment that we use, each individual center purchases the, their own equipment and then we reimburse for that. So the centers may vary a little bit, but I would think that they're pretty much up to date laptops and desktops. But each center purchases its own computers.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 750.
Bill 750 Resolution Providing the Authorization to make all legitimate expenditures for payments and agreements with various agencies to provide job development and employment services, wages and fringe benefits for supervisor staff, workers' compensation, unemployment compensation, vocational training, and on-the-job training, outreach, recruitment costs, and administrative expenditures necessary to implement the 2020 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program and providing the periodic transfer of funds to be used in the 2020 Pittsburgh Partnership Employment Program for a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Do you second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 198, or we have two, actually.
Bill 198 Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article Six, Development Standards Parking, Loading, and Access in Order to Eliminate Minimum Parking Requirements Attached Dwellings.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Motion is to hold for a public hearing.
No, the public hearing was held.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Got you.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, so the, and you were there, Councilman. And we, we had a great, we had a great, yeah, we had a great discussion and
We did. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, yeah, so I wanted to say that there was a public hearing held and we, you know, we spoke in a great length about what this, you know, what this, what this zoning code change does. And I think that, you know, I'm in favor of the, of moving forward without further amendments. There is discussion about further amendments, but if we did that, we would have to then put this piece of legislation back into, I'm sorry, that, that, that amendment would basically start the process all over. So I believe that we should go forward, pass this today, vote in favor of this today, and then talk further about further amendments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, I was also at the public hearing. This is, and it's a topic of great discussion and concern, especially in Lawrenceville. Not only Lawrenceville, Bloomfield also has a lot of these type of dwellings. Just to kind of remind the public, this is applied to the areas of the city and the type of townhomes that are, you know, kind of party walls. And they are, you know, built, 99.9% of them in the city were built before cars were invented, really. So those parts of the city that you walk through that are just, you know, your classic city sidewalk with front stoops facing the sidewalk alongside a crowded, vibrant main street are being changed. Because our requirement that any new construction have a parking space that often leads to a front-facing driveway. It also dramatically increases the cost of building housing to include car storage and driveway space. And so for just a myriad of reasons, it goes against the written community plans that have consensus in, in the areas that I represent. And so we need to unwind our kind of stupid requirements. And so we need to unwind our kind of stupid requirements in the zoning code. And this is part of that unwinding by just allowing you to build a house just like the hundred-year-old house next door to it that wasn't built with car storage. So I'm supportive today. I'm also supportive of continuing these conversations. I think many of us had the phone calls this past week with Chief Gilman, who's said he's supportive of continuing conversations to kind of raise these standards and look to see where they best apply. And even prevent, create more obstacles, especially again for my district to the front-facing driveways and those big garage doors that are facing pedestrian space and really taking away from pedestrian safety on sidewalks. So I I'm I'm in favor of doing more, but I'm voting yes today on this first step in in fixing a problem in in our zoning requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Councilman Wilson, and pardon my ignorance, because unfortunately I was not able to attend the public hearing. But I did have a number of organizations reach out to me with additional language regarding no curb cuts being permitted. Is that language in the bill or is that part of the language you're referring to dealing with moving forward?
So so this just, so this this zoning change, this just takes away the requirement for there to be the, you know, the the parking, the off-street parking. So it's up to the the person who was, who, you know, who's building, whether or not they think that they need the, you know, you know, make that parking available or not. So further, I'm not sure if you'd like me to expand, but what I was just saying is that further adjustments, like if there was a, you know, taking it away completely, I like basically reverse it, flipping it and saying, you know, you can't, you you know, you, you know, in in the in a in a townhome situation, which this is this addresses, you know, this is only considering, it's not a in a zoning area, it's not, this is, you know, specific to the type of building. And, you know, in this in this townhome situation, you know, it just allows, it it takes away that requirement. But if we were making any further changes, we'd have to send it back to the Planning Commission and and start again. So there is some discussion, for instance. You know, you may be getting some of these comments as to if there is the the ability to to have parking access in an alleyway or on the backside of the property, then we should make that amendment. And that is something that we'd have to, you know, we can, we can certainly look into it, but we'd have to stop right now and send this back to the Planning Commission to make those amendments.
Okay, I'm I'm supportive of moving forward. I'll reach out to you after the meeting. The amendment that most have come to me with is simply, as you put, not allowing curb cuts if you actually have access from a secondary street. So don't allow it on the primary street because it's disrupting the contingency of the sidewalks and everything else. So we can, we can work on that after passing this.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, that's that's those are the exact comments that I'm getting as well.
Okay. Any last discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill seven nineteen.
Bill seven nineteen, resolution for the amended resolution number eight sixty-three, which is adopting and approving the twenty nineteen capital budget, the twenty nineteen CDPG grant program, and the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four capital improvement program by reducing bridge upgrades by twelve thousand five hundred dollars and increasing twenty-eighth street bridge by two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reflect the local federal highway administration and the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation shares.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Okay.
So I just wanted to ask the Director, Rick, so I realize that this is part of the bills that Councilman Gross liked to be held. And I just want to make sure again that this isn't going to hold up anything. I know this is part of the the, you know, part of what the southwestern SPA, you know, kee- keeps their their tip list. I just want to make sure that we're not running into one a barrier here with some, you know, the word bureaucracy was used earlier, if there's any 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 risk to to this, to this authorization.
Uh, not with a three three-week hold, you know, there there is an upper limit of, you know, time before those holds, you know, do start to have adverse effects on that. But the proposed three-week hold, I think, can be accommodated.
Okay, all right. You know, I I I appreciate all the comments on this topic because, you know, as we move forward, these are, these are, you know, critical conversations that we're having, especially with Brighton and North Avenue, that intersection, and, you know, moving forward and what that looks like in terms of the double-stack trains. And, you know, just to understand how much really this is on on PennDOT and the state to really, you know, drive the conversation of, you know, what are what are they gonna, you know, hold the the railroad accountable for? And, you know, I just, you know, I worry about the risk of what happened to the West Ohio Bridge in terms of the deterioration that had happened and the closure and how we, the PUC eventually, you know, required the 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 bridge to be to be raised. And, you know, so I'm 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 continually on our stand, our, the city's role in that, in this, in this arena. And, you know, I'm with the community. The community wants a lot of input. So I'm I'm Councilman Gross, I'm speaking specifically about District One right now and how much, you know, the groups that you've mentioned, they're, they they reside in i- in my area. And, you know, we need to hold, you know, when we talk about mitigation moving forward, there's a lot of talk about what the railroad should do for mitigation. There's a lot of mitigation that, you know, that they, you know, that we should really be thinking about. You know, if we're if we're going to be holding the the railroad accountable, we need to make sure that, you know, they're not presenting us just with mitigation that they, you know, should already be doing. And what we really should expect of what this landscape looks like for our communities. So I'm fully supportive of how we need to move forward these conversations with our communities and and making sure they have the ability and a seat at the table. Because I know the community right now is is trying to get the best seat at the table they can in terms of the, talking about North Avenue Bridge. And so anyway, went on a little bit of a rant there, but so I just wanted to say a little bit about that. But also, thank you, Director. I just wanted to, you know, also ask about this bill and if there's any risk of of closure. You know, I'm sorry, not not closure, but, you know, the funding for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Um, that gave me the opportunity to reread my notes, but I forgot one of my questions from the last round. I apologize. So Director Rick, you talked about the the historic review one oh six process and that it can take two years and that the preferred outcome is rehabilitation, but it isn't always. But so clarify for me, you said that the the br- that bridge, which we know is actually at the twenty-eighth Street, was the site of a major labor revolt. You can see the wonderful placard there at, as it was a historic train roundabout. And you see the placard on on Liberty Avenue, but also that the bridge is deemed historic. And who deemed it historic? Is it a city historic?
No, that Main Line Rail Corridor is a state historic, it has state historic designation. So it's actually the rail line and the contributing elements that are part of the rail line. So the bridges are contributing elements to the rail line.
So just those kind of like hard, the infrastructure there is is deemed historic by the state of Pennsylvania. Does the state of Pennsylvania own the rail and the wall and the bridge at twenty-eighth Street?
No, they, no, they do not own that. So the state, again, the historic, the the bridge is a city bridge. In this case, there's dispute among other bridges along the line in this case. And that bridge to be ours.
Let me see. Do you know when the state deemed the bridge historic? Just by curiosity. I could look it up myself.
No, I don't know when it was dedicated as a historic district.
But I I assume the city has always been the owner. So just just wanting to clarify that point. Appreciate it.
That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those, Councilman Wilson?
I believe Councilman Gross is a three weeks. Okay, so I'll make the motion of the whole three weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held three weeks. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Schlossberger. Our first new paper is Bill seven fifty-three.
Bill seven fifty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with CIS for a one-year term for Albert MB monitoring application to predict malicious activity on the city's network by monitoring, alerting, and analyzing information gathered by sensors at a one-time cost not to exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars with three additional option years, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There was one hand raised.
Sorry, Councilman Cockeau?
Just real quick, Santiago, is this fourteen thousand dollars to filter out? What is it to filter out exactly?
Hi, this is Santiago Garcia, Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. So the Albert Sensors, and I'll answer, and if there's further questions, we also have Sylvia Harris on the line, who's the Chief Information and Security Officer. So this is part of a national system that monitors data from different state and local entities, and there's a complementary system that the federal government uses. So this basically detects anomalies. It's not filtering any information per se. We have other tools that do that, the the web filtering. This allows us to detect suspicious activities. So they basically monitor a a number of networks like ours. And if there's traffic going to kind of malicious sites or or other things, it's able to detect that and warn us or prevent that from happening. And if I answered your question.
And and the fourteen thousand dollars is for how long of a period?
That's the one-year subscription. So our goal would be to renew the the contract next year.
So we had this contract last year. How many years have we had this in place?
We haven't had this in place. This is this will be the first year.
Last year, I thought you said.
Yeah, no, well, this is the the first, the the first year that we will have it. And again, it's part of our initiatives on improving cybersecurity at the city.
So we didn't have it last year?
No.
First first year was on. Okay, all right. It's good for me.
Thank you. Any last discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us abstain, one abstention, Councilman Cocke abstained. That takes us to Bill seven fifty-four.
Bill seven fifty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter a one-year agreement with E Plus Technology, Inc., or Network Monitoring, and a security professional services partner aligned with key business goals of reducing risk, improving service efficiency, and minimizing client impact to include better network utilization, monitoring, and enhanced security posture throughout the enterprise at a cost not to exceed four hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Director Garces, would you like to walk us through what this entails?
Sure. And I also have, this is some Director of Operations, Philip Savino, on the line as well to answer any complimentary questions. So this is a three-year agreement with E Plus for a service that we haven't had before. Basically, in the past, but we have a very large and complex network. We have over two hundred and sixty-seven devices that constitute kind of like the backbone of the network. And they're distributed in over a hundred facilities. Right, this includes police stations, fire stations, EMS stations, all the public works buildings, so on and so forth. So basically, we have presence of the network in every building. And with the growing complexity of the network, it's difficult to manage and administer a network of that size, especially given the kind of advanced like engineering knowledge that we need to have in order to do that. So the this is an area that we've been deficient for years, and we've tried a couple of times this year with the budget hiring a senior network engineer. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to find the candidate, you know, these are people that typically make hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. And we're obviously, the city's not in a position to pay a competitive salary there. So what we are proposing is engaging in professional services contract with E Plus. They would be providing obviously a lot of that, all of that advanced engineering support for kind of our complex network. The other thing that they would be providing is network monitoring tools. So this is a little bit different from the Albert Sensors. This is actually being able to tell us if any of the devices that are operating in the network is starting to show failures before it fails. So one of the challenges that we have right now is that if there's a network failure, we only know about it after a user already has experienced failure, which is not best practice. Best practice is to have kind of monitoring tools that allow us to determine if something's starting to malfunction or that it's malfunctioning prior way for there to be business impact. So again, I I think that this will be very beneficial for the city. We know that the network's essential for people to be able to do their work. And the the reliability and stability of the network is kind of the the fundamental kind of pinnacle of the operations for the city's environment.
Thank you, Director. And when you briefed me on this, it happened to be the day after our network had failed for a number of hours. And you described this as something that would be able to catch that ahead of time rather than at the point of failure. And that resulted in us not necessarily being locked out of our own emails, but a lot of the tools that our city workers use to be able to deliver services for the public were on were unavailable for like four or five hours that day. So is that correct that this would help to head that off before it happens?
Definitely. It allows to determine if there's a failure, where's the failure, and what's the device that's failing? And also have access to the engineering and technical resources to address that. So the the contract includes twenty-four seven monitoring where there's people from E Plus and their network operations centers that would be helping detect if if one of these things happen, even if it's after hours. So as you said, the, you know, like it this prevents from people, firefighters being able to be dispatched with the new automatic dispatching system and and kind of doing the operations for the rest of the city. So definitely lots of impact. Then we've been getting better at at managing some of those events, but ever, even since our conversation, we've had a couple of other network outages and events that we're hoping become very rare in the future.
Building permit issuances, other permits, access to software that, you know, we deal with the public all the time. Got it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Director. And I just wanted to, you know, ask and and request, you know, we we can do this just with you and I, or if other council members would like to join or or actually have a, you know, a formal briefing. Because, you know, I think just like we, you know, we have a briefing on sustainability and where we are going in terms of and I think just like we, you know, we have a briefing on sustainability and where we are going in terms of, um, you know, our city, or, you know, our city infrastructure. I mean, I'm sorry, in terms of our city buildings. Um, I, I would also like to be briefed on what, where we are at and where we're going with, um, cybersecurity, our, our network connectivity, um, you know, everything that, you know, we need to improve upon. Um, I think it would just be helpful to have a, a, a broad overview of, of, um, of where we, where we need to go. So I'll be reaching out, um, and I can, um, I'd like to work with you, Councilwoman, to, uh, you know, maybe set something up because I think it'd be a good opportunity to, to have those conversations. Um, you know, definitely a favor of it. And I want to just make sure where, you know, where we need to go.
Definitely. We'd be happy to share with you, um, kind of the plan that we've been building in the past couple of years. And um, if, that there, there's obviously certain levels of the conversation that are of highly confidential because we'd be revealing information that is sensitive. But, um, I'm, I'm, I know that we've discussed in the past, there's formats and, and venues that allow the council to get access to that level of of privilege. So happy to share with you kind of what we're building and, and kind of what the progress and the, the plan ahead is.
Yes, thank you. Cause that's, I, you see my hesitation to, to, you know, how much do we talk about? Cause some of this may teeter on some public safety. So, um, you know, I appreciate, um, you know, I'll, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Karkio?
Yeah, Director, I don't mean to come across as unsupportive for these measures. I really don't. But I'm always just so surprised at the amount of money we spend to have these protections or measures in place. Um, you know, and it seems like it's never ending to me, you know? I mean, this year it's going to be the fourteen thousand for, for the new protection work. And, and part of that is my ignorance, I will tell you, because maybe to, to a certain degree, I have to take your word for it. And I hear the other council members and I know that they know that this is important. I just would be guarding against, you know, throwing money into protection after protection after protection, you know? To some degree, if we break down, we break down. We get back up and running. We get on the phone until we can get back up and running. But to have, you know, a, a, a pot of money to prevent us from breaking down, if we break down, what happens? I mean, how quickly do we get up and running?
So, um, again, typically in the past two years that I've been with the city, the city, the network has experienced a number of outages. Typically what you would see in a network, the grade that sours, you know, like being able to provide a, a, as we were talking with the Councilwoman Strasburger, the, our network provides services to public safety. So, um, again, I don't want to reveal the information that I necessarily shouldn't. But let's just say that we've experienced network outages in very, during very critical moments for public safety. And it's difficult because at that point, they end up having to rely on alternative methods of communication to be able to do dispatching, to be able to do, um, other work that's, that includes EMS, that includes fire, police. So, um, we have a network that really should be operating at about like ninety-nine point nine-nine percent, um, uh, uptime. And we are not there in some sense, like it's even difficult for us to calculate the uptime because we don't have these tools that are so basic and so common in, 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 in other parts. So again, the, I, I appreciate, we, we know that this is expensive pieces of infrastructure that require expensive expertise to maintain. Um, we just wanted to fail less often. It's not so much about, um, uh, obviously when it comes to cybersecurity, that's a slightly, it's, it's a related but slightly separate conversation. Again, this is why there, the, we're, we're requesting the two pieces. Um, but, um, you know, like, but the, the reality is like, we're, we're facing the, the cities all the time more reliant on information systems because it helps dispatch nine-one-one. It helps collect taxes. It helps issue permits. It helps, uh, the snowplows operate, uh, all these pieces, all of these parts of the operation. And, um, when it comes to cybersecurity, the reality is, you know, like they, we're exposed to bad actors that exist throughout the entire world, you know? Like if you're going to steal a, a snowplow or, or a truck or a vehicle, you need to be close to the truck or the vehicle. Uh, with cybersecurity, really, as long as you have access to the internet, um, and we are again plugged into a number of these, uh, communities working with federal partners and with other cities. And we know that there's threat actors that exist throughout the entire world and some that are well-funded that are trying to get an access to our information. So that's why we make those investments. I just, I finalize by saying that the funding that we are allocating here, we're moving funding that we had allocated to other programs to cover this. So, um, obviously, uh, we try to do what's best for the city from a financial standpoint. And we're kind of here moving money to try to be as conscious as possible and getting exactly what we need and not going overboard. But, uh, we appreciate the support.
Director, you've done a good job, you know? I, and I know you're looking after the city's best interest. I'm not, I'm not looking at you so much. It's the industry. I mean, it really is. It's an expensive industry and one protection after another just keeps coming and coming, but, um, not a reflection on you. And certainly when you talk about public safety, not having that communication, by all means, that could be critical. So, so I'll be supportive of today. Um, you know, it's not a, thanks for answering.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, this is one where they paying the money upfront is less expensive than paying the money at the backend. Um, Atlanta, when they suffered their breach, they were in the tens of millions of dollars of the remediation. Baltimore as well. So this is where it, it seems like a lot of money, but trying to stand up the environment in the backend is, is always more expensive and obviously very stressful for everybody when you are telling people, you know, that we're going to be delayed for months processing taxes or whatever. So just trying to stay ahead of it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 755.
Aye. Please. Thank you.
Bill 755 Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with the Change in Innovation Agency LLC for access to their learning management system and consult a, consultive assistance to adapt the city gold belt workshop for e-learning for one year and a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second. Councilwoman?
I just wanted to show my support for the gold belt program. This is something that trains city employees um, for, for eighteen thousand dollars. It's trained city employees each year through a program to think about ways that they can save the city money and be innovative and recommend to their directors and their bosses how to save money in the everyday work that they do. And since we started this program two years ago, we have saved um, over two hundred thirty thousand dollars for the city through these kinds of efficiencies that have been, been gleaned. So I just wanted to demonstrate my support for this. I really am fa- am in favor of continuing this program.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have two new papers, Bill 747.
Bill 747 Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Botario Development, forty-one twelve Butler Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 748.
Bill 748 Resolution ending Resolution 342 of twenty nineteen, which authorized the mayor and the Office of Management and Budget and the Director of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement with Oxford Development Company to serve as property manager for four twelve Boulevard of the Allies to provide for additional funding for management fees and amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars and two cents to authorize appropriation of building operations at an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-six cent and capital repairs at an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six dollars and twenty-six cent for a deposit into relevant accounts.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Trying to actually click and open the attachment here and see if it does a breakout. Um, I previously voted no on these management contracts. This is for the very expensive luxury class A office building that council approved the purchase of, um, some years ago. And I voted no on it moved, removed the U R A P L I planning and, um, housing authority, I believe, also into. Um, and then it has a budgetary operating impact. Um, uh, we're outsourcing the management of the building, um, to a private company. Um, and, um, is there anyone here who can speak to why this is additional funds? Cause I, I have actually my briefing later today for the U R A. And I didn't realize that this bill, the, the timing was off. Um, is this actually increasing it over the regular, please, is maybe Mr. Urbanic still on the line? At least he could maybe be helpful here?
Yes, yes. It appears to be in just an extension of the, uh, maintenance contract. It's detailed at the, uh, end of the, uh, uh, legislation.
Yeah, I'm looking, okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't click on the right link here. I open, I have a cover letter and a summary. I need the summary document or the actual legislative number. Click on the full text of the legislation. So this was a multi-year original contract that was three years. And was it four hundred thousand dollars per year or was it like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year?
I think it was a lower amount. I'm having trouble pulling up.
I mean, it reads one point one million or to serve as property manager for four one-two Boulevard of the Allies. Uh, but then the city only has a portion of that contract to cover. So that's why I'm a little confused by the math.
Yeah, this.
Right? And the, the portion is proportional to the square footage that we own. It's a pro-rata. So I don't know what's, I just don't remember the, I'm sorry, I asked this at the time, the first time, but I don't remember what portion of the building we're paying for.
If there's, there's a form, specific formula, uh,
Twenty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent? We don't really know the ballpark. How much of the building do we have?
Um, I think we come out to like twenty-eight percent. I'm, I'm not positive on that.
And we're not paying the U R A's portion directly out of our budget?
We're, we should not be.
Right? Cause we give the U R A operating money and the U R A should be paying its own portion of the, its operating money.
Once again, I don't know if we received a final agreement, final signed agreement.
You think there's no active co-op agreement for the building?
There probably, probably is, but I don't believe that, uh, council has that. It probably exists, but it's, I, I don't have it here or in front of me.
Okay, Madam Clerk, and I'm Council President, isn't here, but can we make sure that we request a copy of the co-op agreement? For our council's records, since council had to supply the money and is being asked to supply the money here. Um, so I am, I'm definitely voting no today. Um, we're, as a contentious objector to this, this, uh, project. Uh, but I don't have any further questions today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All, all those opposed?
No.
The bill is recommended. That does exhaust our agenda. Um, for today, we do have some meeting announcements. Um, this afternoon at one P M, a cable cast post-agenda discussion is scheduled via the Zoom platform on justice-related and human services. And tomorrow, Thursday, the eighth, with sessions at two and two-thirty, council will be holding a briefing with the Office of Sustainability as relates to sustainable development goals. In addition to our regular standing committee meetings next Tuesday and Wednesday at ten A M, council will hold a briefing on Tuesday, October thirteenth with sessions at one and one-thirty relative to climate change. Also next Wednesday, October fourteenth at one-thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on historical designations of the Civic Building downtown and the Hanauer Rosenberg House in Georgetown and the Spring Hill School in Spring Hill. Um, that exhausts my meeting announcements. Are there any announcements from members?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just briefly, our Zoom, uh, meeting with, uh, Chief Gilman is underway. So, uh, you and Councilwoman Strasburger, uh, can join. That would be great.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none. Uh, motion to excuse the absent members. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thanks.